Thank you. Welcome to our June 11, 2024 work session. We have some guests in the audience. Looking forward to you introducing them, Mr. Manager, and hearing their, a lot about their topics.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as all of the items for tonight are under Captain Geis's portfolio, I'll turn the floor over to him.
Nothing like all fun in one night, right? So, our first, our first presentation today will be from the Army Corps of Engineers. They're going to give us an update on the Deep Creek Bridge. I'm going to like to introduce Colonel Brian Hallberg. And this is, he's been the commander at the Corps now and our district for a few years now. He's the one that helped us get that shovel on the ground. So, and this is his last meeting, and he's going to introduce his relief. And I'll turn that over to them right now.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor West and other distinguished members of the City Council. I'm Colonel Brian Hallberg, the District Commander for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Norfolk District. To my left is my civilian deputy, Mr. Mike Darrow. And to my right is my incoming replacement Colonel Sonny Avichal. So, he's coming all the way from Germany. He is a resident of Chesapeake. And so, he looks forward to being the next District Commander, number 61 for the Norfolk District. So...
This is project number one?
Number one. Yes, ma'am. So, this evening, we're going to brief you on the Deep Creek Bridge replacement going... So, here you can see a couple of pictures. On the left-hand side is April 2000, or I mean, yeah, 2023, before we did the groundbreaking, no construction work. And then you can see to the right, it's May of 2023 with construction activities ongoing. Ongoing construction continues to replace a functionally obsolete bridge with a five-lane, two-leaf drawbridge and improve other roadway approaches on both sides. Phase one and parts of both phases two and three are currently in progress. Since the groundbreaking ceremony occurred in May of last year, we didn't start construction on the site until September. And you can see pictures on the top there of the demolition in September of 2023 that occurred. And then we got into the tremi work. So, there was a bunch of steel with some funnels on it. And we poured concrete down through the water to get the base foundation. And that's what you're seeing on those bottom pictures for February of 2024 is that work. Next slide, please. All right. In this slide, I'll begin sharing the achievements and activities we've had onsite since the quarterly meeting in February. Looking at the bottom-left picture, we've completed critical concrete works, including the placement of the finished flat layer of concrete and the installation of steel forms for the copper dam's foundation. Additionally, we successfully placed and inspected the rebar mats within the copper dam, ensuring structural integrity. Our team has also completed test pile driving and the driving of concrete piles for the approach span, providing essential structural support. Not pictured in that bottom right, so it's a little bit out of the picture focus, is much progress that has been made on the stormwater drainage system installation along Moses Grandy Trail, including excavation, pipe installation, and manhole place replacement. We coordinated with the City of Chesapeake Utility Department to replace damaged infrastructure components. Also on this slide, I'd like to speak to the utility coordination. With successful communication and collaboration with the City of Chesapeake, we've resolved many issues with the Lumos cabling and Verizon Fiber Utility relocation. We appreciate the city's assistance and support in solving these matters. At the last brief, we still had issues with gaining the last two parcels. And so, I got good news on that regarding the real estate. The district now possesses all 40 parcels that we got from the Department of Justice. So, we don't have, you know, the real estate challenge ahead of us. It's behind us now. So, on May 21st of 2024, the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Virginia granted the federal government immediate possession of parcels 126 and 127, completing the two-year process. We'd like to share a video of some construction progress.
So, last night for the Deep Creek Bridge replacement project, we were placing a, in the copper cell, a grid tremi, which is about 10 feet of concrete, about 1,300 cubic yards. And the intent for that is to build a, a support structure to put the bridge house on. Well, that is basically, the tremi is the foundation that will support the bridge structure that will open and close the bridge. Because of the traffic that we have here, we had to close down the South George, Washington Highway, so that we could bring the concrete trucks in, would be about 130 concrete trucks. So, the city said that we had to do that at night and on a weekend, so that we wouldn't disturb a lot of the traffic. So, that was kind of the reason why we had to do it at night. And on unusual project, you would do that during the daytime, because you wouldn't have all the traffic that's around this area.
This bridge is nearly 100 years old. And it was designed for a time period that was much different than today's traffic and the needs of the public. Today, we, on average, see over 30,000 vehicles a day traveling through here. So, that's, that's the overall mission of this bridge, is to provide safe access to both navigation and to the public. And with this type of bridge, you actually have to build it offsite. So, there's lots of working parts across state lines, a lot of coordination, both at the federal and the state level. It, it has a process, but we're charging through.
All right. So, it's a good, just showing some visual product of a lot of the activity that's out there. Mike did remind me, so the, we've got some real estate easements, you know, for construction, temporary construction easements that we're going to have to renew. And we're going through the process right now. But I don't see any really challenges with that. So, with the goal in mind, you know, looking at this slide, that the end state of having those five lanes with the, the two-leaf closures, the bridge is scheduled for its initial full test erection in June or July at the fabrication plant in Canada. So, I don't know if everyone is aware. So, all the, the steel and the, you know, building all those special components to it was actually up in Canada. So, they're going to put it all together up there and make sure that it works. And then they'll start shipping the components down. And I'll talk a little bit about where that fits into the construction sequence. So, the overall progress, so in March, the project was around 20% complete. And by May, it had progressed to 30% complete. Despite the progress, challenges related to weather, infrastructure, and coordination persists and require ongoing, ongoing attention. Our team continues to mitigate the impact of saturated soil conditions along Moses Grandy Trail, which complicate excavation and installation activities. The soil in these areas too soft and must be engineered and strengthened to ensure the structural integrity of the road. We've had some construction delays. We had some unforeseeable factors such as weather conditions and previously unknown site conditions, which have contributed to delays mainly utilities. You know, it's an old site. There's a lot of utility lines that we've had to coordinate with the city and just make sure that we mitigate that. So, we're still resolving the responsibility and costs associated with damage repairs during utility work, such as a hydrant valve replacement and a water main break. But overall, I know the schedule's slipped to the right by six months because of these construction delays. But we continue to progress forward to deliver this great project for the city and the residents in Deep Creek. So, all this has contributed to the likelihood that the completion dates for the construction will be shifted to the right. We are still assessing the impacts of one of the utility constraints. But current indicators suggest that project completion will occur in the spring of 2027. It's important to note, however, that although we've established a projected date for the opening of the first two lanes, which will be in October of '25, that that won't lessen the traffic until we get really all five lanes in place. And that will be in, as I said, in the spring of 2027. So, improvements in these traffic conditions cannot be expected until all five lanes are completed. I did want to give an update on the funding utilization. So, by this month, we're on track to have spent almost $9 million of the city's 20 million contribution. So, that's like 45%. Think of what we were, just making sure the city gets repaid on it, so you can, you know, get your reimbursement from BDOT. And next slide. So, in closing, as a partner and team, we aim to always guide our actions with the three Cs, which are commitment, collaboration, and communication. In this case, our commitment to the success of this project, our effective and transparent communication with one another, and the development of collaborative solutions. Our weekly progress meetings at the working level that involves a contractor, the city, and the Corps, help ensure that we make sure, that we remain constant in delivering a quality project. At this time, I'd like to thank you all for having us here this evening. And I welcome any additional comments or questions.
Before I ask for questions, I do want to just acknowledge your leadership, Colonel Hallberg. You've done a stellar job in getting this project going. I know that it's disappointing when there are, when there are obstacles. But I think in Hampton Roads, we've sort of gotten used to that, because there are so many projects going on that we don't always get them done exactly when we say they're doing. But it's, you know, it's beautiful to see a, a video like that and the progress that's being made. And certainly do appreciate all that you've done. We've enjoyed working with you. I'm sure if we gave Mr. Geis the mic, he would probably talk about nice things about you for 30 minutes or so. But we don't have 30 minutes. And we welcome you, Colonel Habatall. Is that correct?
It's Avichal, sir.
Avichal, okay. Welcome you, sir. Look forward to working with you. Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. So, I, I live in the Deep Creek area. And one of the saving graces for citizens who are coming over that bridge from the Moses Grandy side is that right turn. It's like, you have a, kind of like an on-ramp or off-ramp turn right there. And I know that we're, we're building the two lanes on the south side. And eventually, that turn is going to go away. Is there any way for us to maintain the ability to have some type of dedicated turn there to mitigate traffic as much as possible? Or is that going to go away completely?
I don't know that I can answer your question. I bet I'll, I'll take it back and we'll get, get back to you on what it will look like, once we've got that construction complete.
Okay. Thank you.
But I do think that the plan is to have the right turn there, to not eliminate that. I mean, I don't think we have a plan to, I mean, we always need to have the right turn there. So, but we, we will reconfirm for you.
Yes. Well, let, let me clarify. Not that we won't have the ability to turn right, but as of now, you do not have to come to the light in order to turn right. So, and so it allows for more cars who are going northbound to be able to get there quicker and not having to stop at the light further holding up traffic coming over the bridge. So, yeah, if there is a way to maintain that dedicated turn as much as possible, I think that'd be a huge help.
Acknowledge. But thanks for the clarification. I mean, I, we work extremely close with the city and the traffic engineers to try and figure out and mitigate and continue to work our construction sequence to see what we can do. So, I mean, glad you raised that.
Other questions or comments before we go to the next topic? Seeing none, Mr. Manager.
Okay. We're doing the big swap-out. This will be one of two swap-outs. Our next presentation is actually requested by council. Mr. Dennis Bagley from the SIPSA is here to provide an update on their, really, the operations. It's not specifically on one topic. It's really an operational update where I think you're going to be really interested in this topic. And Dennis, we'll send it to you.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, first like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to come to you today and talk to you about some of the exciting things that SIPSA's doing. I would be remiss if I did not recognize my Director of Operations to my right, Henry Strickland. And we have one of our board members in the back, which is John Maxwell. Thank you for coming, Mr. Maxwell. I thought, as I was putting this together, it was probably best to go back and do a little bit of, kind of a background of, of SIPSA. 2018 was a, was a very, very exciting time for SIPSA. At that time, SIPSA paid off all this debt, became a debt-free organization. And from that point on, we began to do things a lot differently than we had done in the past. In 2018, we went to all of the member communities and we developed a use and support agreements that were identical for every single member community. And that was much different than previously, because as you know, Suffolk had a sweet deal, and Virginia Beach had a sweet deal, and everybody else was paying the bills. So, this use and support agreement between the two, between the eight-member communities, went a long way to kind of bring the communities back together again. And at the same time, in 2018, we went into a waste disposal service agreement with Wheelbrader Portsmouth, who was producing steam and electricity at the Navy Yard using solid waste. That agreement between the communities, the use and support agreements, and the solid waste agreement with Wheelbrader was due to expire at the same exact time. That was June 30th of 2027. The term of the solid waste disposal service agreement was, was set to match that, so that at the end of that term, if any of the member communities wanted to get out of SIPSA, they would be able to do that. And we wouldn't be on the hook for a certain amount of waste going to, to Wheelbrader. So, it kind of matched everything up and gave everybody an opportunity to see how SIPSA was going to operate. So, what were the advantages of going to waste to energy? There were, there were lots of advantages. First of all, we negotiated a very sweet deal with, with Wheelbrader. And we were, we had a very low tip fee. 85% of our waste, instead of going to the landfill, was going to Wheelbrader. And that was reducing the stress on the landfill and the airspace that we had. We agreed to take about 30% of the waste that we were taking to Wheelbrader in the form of ash back to the regional landfill. So, instead of having 100% of all the waste, we were taking only 30% back. And what that did was extend the life of the landfill. The ash was used as alternative daily cover, which is very, very meaningful, because we didn't have to buy soil to cover the ash every day, because you have to put a foot of, of cover over the ash every day, and then two-foot every, every 14 days. So, by using ash, we were able to minimize our, our costs when it came to cover. And because we were only bringing a small amount of waste into the landfill, the life expectancy of the landfill was extended. And at the time, this is kind of a flow chart of how the waste was, was being handled. And it, it really was economical for SIPSA, because our member communities, is there any point on here? I don't think so. The, the member communities were bringing the waste into our transfer stations, which are up on the top-left corner. And then private haulers were bringing their waste either to one of our transfer stations. But the majority of that was going to, directly to Wheelbrader. Once those member communities brought the waste into the transfer stations, we transferred that waste in tractor-trailers over to either the regional landfill. 15% of our waste was going there. And those were the communities that were out west, Olive White and, and Franklin, because that'd make a lot of sense to go right past the landfill and drive another 15 minutes and, and dump it at, at Wheelbrader. So, that waste, 15% of that waste was coming from the west, was going to the landfill. The remaining 85% was being hauled over to, to the Wheelbrader plant in Portsmouth making steam. And the commercial tons were being hauled by a private hauler. And then that was being burned. And then the 30% of the ash was coming back to, to, to SIPSA. There is one down at the bottom in the center of the City of Portsmouth, and other member communities had the option of bringing it directly to the RDF facility, Refuge derived fuel facility. That, and Chesapeake did use that when they were over in the South Norfolk area, because they could go directly across the Jordan Bridge. And it was much more efficient than coming all the way back to Greenbrier. But as all good things must come to an end, that plan changed. The Navy determined that it was in the, in the interest of national security that they build a combined heat and power plant at the naval shipyard. So, they notified Wheelbrader that they were no longer going to purchase steam from Wheelbrader. Wheelbrader was receiving about $10 million a year from the Navy for the steam that they were, that the Navy was using. And any company that takes $10 million out of, of revenue out of their company, they're not going to be in business very long if they continue to do that. So, they notified us that they were going to not continue that contract after June 30th of 2024. That is about 15, 20 days away. So, we are preparing for that. Wheelbrader also notified us that they would no longer take our waste. And that is, that's where the problems began for, for SIPSA moving forward, and one of the reasons why I'm here with you this evening. On December the 16th of 2022, there was a major fire in the conveyor system that took waste from the Refuge derived fuel facility, which is on one side of Victory Boulevard. And the conveyor takes it across the street and into the waste-to-energy facility where the boilers are at. It caught on fire on September 16th of 2022. And it was an $8 million repair. And Wheelbrader decided they were not going to make that repair. So, therefore, they were no longer able to take all of our waste. They were only take, only capable of taking 1,000 tons a day. So, we, on December the 16th of 2022, had to completely shift our operation and take those other roughly 1,250 tons a day to the regional landfill. And that caused issues, because it began to take up more airspace. The impacts. The RDF facility, as it took 1,000 tons a day, if they, we, we determined that if they took 1,000 tons a day, it was better than not taking anything at all. So, we went into, we, we revised our contract with them to only get, be 1,000 tons a day. But then they were not able to take 1,000 tons a day. Some days, they're only taking 300 tons a day. So, the remainder of that has to go out to the regional landfill. And all of our planning, you know, 10-year planning had been based on us only taking that 30% of ash to the landfill. Commercial waste that we were receiving, we were sending directly to commercial facilities like Bethel in Hampton or Atlantic. And it was being hauled by a private hauler. MSW, all the MSW from our member communities, which is Chesapeake, Portsmouth, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Suffolk, Olive White, Southampton, and Franklin, all of that was going to the landfill. The rapid consumption of remaining landfill space is the issue that we're dealing with now. This additional waste has caused us to accelerate the need for expansion at the regional landfill. And in our business, if you're five years out and you need, you need space in five years, you're in a crisis. So, we're, we are in a crisis. And this was due to the fact that we had a contract that went through 2027. But the, the failure of that contract has forced us into having to move quickly. Now, this next slide is probably one of the most important slides of our entire presentation. This shows you the cells that we have remaining at the regional landfill. Cells five and six, we're currently operating in. It has about 2.3 million cubic yards remaining. That life will take us to April of 2027 at the current volume of waste that we're taking to, to that facility. Cell seven is permitted, but it's not constructed. We are in the process of trying to revise the construction plans for that to give us some additional airspace. And it's likely we're 12 months out before the, that new permit modification is going to be completed. And then we would go into RFP for construction of the facility. And then cells eight and nine, they are not permitted. It's about 14 million cubic yards. And if we were to get this permit, it would take us through 2061 at our current capacity. Now, 2061 sounds like a long time, but when you're in my business, it doesn't sound like a long time at all. 2061 is right around the corner. And 2061 is only if we get a wetlands permit to construct cells eight and nine. We've been working on that for some time. I'm going to talk about that now. What is the future of, of the regional landfill? All of the remaining acres, it's, it's a little over 340 acres or so that are there, are all wetlands. And when, when the state created new wetland regulations, one of those regulations says that you can't site or expand a landfill if you impact more than two acres of wetlands. Well, we will be impacting 109 acres to build cells eight and nine. However, there's a caveat in that legislation that says, except for a landfill located in the City of Portsmouth, operated by an authority, and one landfill in Danville that is operated by an authority. So, our legislators clearly intended for the regional landfill to be expanded. And so does, so does DEQ. They understand what, what that legislation meant. However, we had to get a wetlands permit and go through an environmental impact statement with the Army Corps. And EPA is involved. And EPA does not see that the same way. So, we've had to work through that with the EPA. And we've been working three and about, about three and a half years, almost four and a half years now, to try to get this permit. And we spent, this says 3.2 million, but we just had to purchase some additional property last week for mitigation of wetlands. And we're right at $5 million. And we still don't have a permit. We're expecting the permit, the record of decision on our permit to come in sometime late July, between late July and September. We've agreed, as part of this permit, there's something called cumulative impacts. And because we were going to be expanding into 109 acres, and we still had three more cells of about 180 acres that were still wetlands, the EPA said, well, you need to, you need to be charged with those other acres and, and eight, and 10, 11, and 12. And they should be counted towards this project, because we know you're going to come back later and ask us to expand that when you finish cells eight and nine. And we had to go to them and say, wait a minute, timeout. We'll, we'll put that property and they, put a preservation easement on that property, so they can never be built on if we can get a permit on eight and nine, because we knew the likelihood of us getting a permit with all of those hanging out there was, was pretty much zero. Our board approved that. And we went back and said, if we get cells eight and nine, then we will put cells 10, 11, and 12 in a, in a conservation easement, so there will always be wetlands, just as there's nothing can ever be done on that property. So, the reality of it is, the future of construction of a landfill in the Commonwealth is, is, is pretty slim. There's not, not much chance that's going to happen. It's been a, a real chore, to say the least, over the last four and a half years, trying to get this permit. And the likelihood of us ever getting a permit to build another landfill anywhere in our region is, is pretty much nonexistent. And I say that, because we went, gone through an exercise in this process, where we went across the region and we looked for every piece of, every parcel of land that was 330 acres or larger. We, we laid those out. And then we applied another layer of requirements on that. And it had to be within two miles of a major roadway. And we kept adding layers onto that until, of things that would, would be necessary to build a landfill. And we came down to it, there was about 20 sites that we could actually build, possibly build on. And when we went to the landowners, all of them pretty much said no, except for one. And the one that said yes, that they would be willing to sell the property, was in Southampton County. And Southampton County has a major, major uproar of the citizens, of their, of their Board of Supervisors. And the Board of Supervisors eventually passed an ordinance saying that no landfill would be built in Southampton County. So, nobody wants a landfill in their backyard. So, there's no other locality, no other location to do that across the region. So, SIPSA's future, what are we going to do? So, SIPS's future, uh, wh- what are we going to do? And I, I'm going to, I'm going to say to you tonight, we got to think differently. SIPS has got to think differently. Our region's got to think differently. Uh, you know, we put a man on the moon in three years. The president said we were going to do that. And we can't find a way to manage our waste any better than putting it in the ground. It's a shame and we're going to do that. We're going to find another way to manage our waste. So how can, um, how can we be, uh, the most efficient, how can we manage, uh, the region's waste the most efficiently? We asked that question and as we asked that question, some other questions came up. And we tried to answer those from, from, uh, from a lot of different sources. First is what is the current state of recycling? Recycling is a way to pull the waste out of the waste stream and, um, reduce the amount of waste. But recycling is in, and it's just, it's just completely out of control. The cost is out of control. The volume of recyclables that we're pulling out are, are, are very low compared to the cost that we're having to pay for recycling across the region. And, uh, but what we do know is the citizens want recycling. So what we began to think about is how can we kind of mesh these things together and provide a recycling, a component of what we're trying to do? Our goal is certainly just to reduce the amount of waste going into the regional landfill so that we can expand the life of, of the facility. But we need to look at other things. And we wouldn't know what the makeup of, of the waste stream was in the region. And we did a waste characterization study and, uh, one of the locations was the Chesapeake Transfer Station. What we found is sixty percent of the waste that's in the waste stream can be recycled. Uh, a lot of that is organics, but, um, we, we know exactly the percentage of organics, exactly the percentage of plastic, of old, uh, corrugated cardboard, of paper. Um, and, and we put that in our RFP. Uh, public opinion, I think we know what public opinion is about recycling. Citizens want that. Uh, environmental factors, um, what landfilling is the least, uh, uh, popular item on the waste hierarchy for any organization, for, for, for the DEQ or for EPA. So that's got to be the last thing we do, but there will always be a need for landfilling. Uh, every process you use or some residual and you've got to have a place to put that. So we still need to focus on having that landfill space available. Um, available technologies, you know, you hear a lot of people talking about, um, recycling and, and, and they beat down a lot of different ideas. But technology has changed. I'm looking at, um, you know, electric cars just the other day. You know, I'm not saying I'm, I'm a fan of electric cars, but look at where electric cars were a year ago and two years ago and three years ago. If you use the data that come out three years ago, it's not true about what electric cars can do today. So the technology that's available today has taken some of the most, um, impressive technology like, uh, AI, artificial intelligence, and it's put it into the waste sorting business. And it's allowed us to be able to do things that we weren't able to do a year ago. So, um, there are a lot of technologies available. And one that's got to be considered is what is the net system cost? We, we've got to make sure that we have a, a, a product that, that our member localities are willing to pay for. You know, if I come back to you and say, we got a, we got this great idea, but it's two hundred dollars a ton, you will laugh at me. I've got to come back to you with something that does what we wanted to do at a rate that you're willing to pay. Uh, then one of the drawbacks and one of the things I want to talk about tonight is use and support agreements. Our use and support agreements with each of our member communities expires on June the thirtieth of two thousand and twenty seven. Uh, what, what that means is that if, uh, if our member localities do nothing between now and then, they would just roll over and we would continue on for another ten years. But if somebody wants to get out, they have to let us know that they want to get out of SIPS. And they have to give us six months notice. Uh, and it's, it's in your use, the current use and support agreements, how you do that and you get out. Well, if you're going to go out and try to find somebody who's going to invest a large amount of money into a product that's going to manage our waste, then they're going to want some term that they're going to be assured they're going to be receiving the waste at a certain cost. So those use and support agreements have become important or we'll never be able to negotiate a contract to do anything other than what we're doing currently. And then one of the things that this, this region has had a hard time coming to grips with is the difference between, uh, municipal solid waste and commercial waste. Uh, Henry is our operations manager and he'll tell you there is no difference in commercial waste and, and MSW. Uh, and there's no truer, um, there's no truer way to look at that than when we, when we had, uh, the pandemic. If you went to McDonald's and you ate in McDonald's and you ate a hamburger and you threw your trash in the trash can at McDonald's, that was commercial waste. But if you took that same hamburger and you took it home and ate it, you put it in your own trash can, it becomes MSW. It's the same waste. And the other thing we got to look at is that commercial waste is driven, if the, if the cost of, of disposal of commercial waste goes up, what happens? They charge our, our citizens that additional amount. So we got, if, 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 if we don't keep the commercial waste in mind as we move forward, I think we're making a huge mistake. So what do we do? Uh, I went to my board and I said, we need to go out for an RFP for an alternative waste disposal mechanism. And this has been something I've been working on for all three years or more. And our board said, whoa, 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 wait a minute, we need more information. So we said, okay, let's go out for an RFI, request for information to find out what's available. What we found out through that RFI, that the technology is available that streamlines weight, that streamlines waste sorting. Currently, what, what we do is we, we pay for every household to recycle. And only a small portion of that, all of those citizens recycle. Whether they recycle or not, you pay for it. Uh, with what we call, um, uh, waste sorting is that all the cans get recycled. They take, nobody has to have two cans anymore. It's one can. Put all your waste in one can. It goes through what's, what, what they're dubbed as, as a robot. It's controlled with, um, artificial intelligence. And it continues to go around until they pulled out all the recyclables from that material. And then, uh, what you're looking at is all of the cans being recycled versus only twenty five or thirty percent of the households. And other twenty five or thirty percent of the households, how much of that is actually, um, recycled material? How much of it is MSW? Because a lot of people use that can for both. So, um, that technology is available. Uh, recycling rates, um, to be increased dramatically through, um, mixed waste sorting. What that means is that if you, if you, everybody on your street's can gets recycled and you can take sixty percent out, you have a volume, right? And if there's, if there's fifteen houses on your street and only a thirty percent of those fifteen houses, um, again, were recycling and of them you've got thirty percent, that volume is much smaller. So, uh, through mixed war, mixed, uh, waste sorting, you're able to, to, to pull a lot more, uh, of the recyclables out. Uh, through the use of artificial intelligence, you're able to purify that waste. And this is a story that gets told a lot, that, uh, when you do mixed waste sorting, you contaminate all of your material. That's just, 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 just not an accurate statement. Um, you can, uh, with these mixed waste sorting that's using the A, uh, AI technology, if you wanted to pull out nothing in, except for Starbucks cups, it's able to pick up a UPC code on the side of it or one of those squares. And it says, this is a Starbucks cup and it can sort all the Starbucks cups out of the trash, if that's what you wanted to do. That wouldn't be very economical to do that. But, but what I'm getting at is they're able to pick out, uh, the same types of plastic and they sell it for a lot higher price because it's a, it's a very pure mixture. It's, it's purely whatever they're looking for. If, if, if they've got an off taker to take, um, uh, water bottles, a plastic water, clear plastic water bottles, that's all they'll sort out of that, uh, in that bunker would be clear plastic water bottles. And they've got another off taker that takes red tide containers. They'll take all the red tide containers. Um, sixty percent or more of our waste stream can be recycled. If you take sixty percent out, that means you've got forty percent going to the landfill. Simple math. So this is a way to get not down to thirty where we were before, but it gets us close. And then when we went out for the RFI, we found that there were some very large companies who were on our doorstep, um, filling us in on what they could do. And, uh, they have, um, in turn followed up with it when, in the RFP process. So after we went back to the board and our board heard, uh, the message and, and saw that this, this technology was available, they've, uh, okayed us to move, staff to move on with an RFP. And the, you're not going to be able to see this, I'm sure, but I'll, I'll go through it and, and clearly state what our main goal was. Our main goal was reduce the region's waste going to the regional landfill. That was our goal. But what we found as we went through the process, um, we didn't just get that. We also got a, a recycle component that our, I think our region really is in need of. And this is kind of a byproduct of what we were, were looking for originally. Uh, we believe that, that we can increase the recycle rate tremendously by, by taking out that sixty percent, including the organics, and only put forty percent back into the landfill. So, uh, we achieve our main goal, which is to reduce the waste going into, to the regional landfill. And the ancillary benefits is that we have a recycle component that's better than what we've been using in the past. So some of the key points of the RFP first was, uh, landfilling would not qualify under the RFP. We had several people that wanted to put in bids for landfilling, but that's not what we're looking for. We're looking for an alternative to landfilling. Um, we asked the officers, um, had to own, we didn't ask, we said, you shall own and operate, uh, three reference facilities for a period of three years. Um, we considered, uh, proposed interim solutions because, uh, as you can imagine, when you're investing this kind of money and building a facility like this to do the amount of waste that we have, it's going to take a while to build that. So we wanted to know what can you do on the interim to get us to that point? And, uh, that was some of the information that came back. And we contemplated a twenty year term, but we left the door open for shorter terms and longer terms. And e- economics is clear on this. If you invest, if the, if, if the company is going to invest two hundred and fifty million dollars and you give them fifteen years to do, to, to recover their return, uh, recover their investment, you're going to have X. If you go to thirty years, it's going to be half, the cost should be half as much because you, you, they're able to, to recover their costs over a thirty year period versus fifteen year period. But typically what you're going to see probably is a twenty year term for these contractors that come in and want to invest this kind of money. This is a very, very comprehensive evaluation of the financial capabilities because there, the road is littered over the years with companies that come in and say they can do this. But we are taking a very serious stance on this. And, uh, when the time is right, we'll bring in a financial consultant to look at the numbers to make sure that what we see and what the, the contractors are presenting are actually factual. Can they do that? Uh, we believe that, I mean, we have a really good team of folks put together, a legal, um, uh, technical, engineering, uh, staff that, that has been through, down this road before. And I think that we have a good team evaluating them, but we want to go back and make sure, especially on the financials, can they do this? Uh, we'll take site visits to all the facilities. We'll look at the facilities. We'll look at their books. We'll look at their off takers. We'll evaluate, can, is this a long-term solution or is it not? And if it's not, we're going to tell you that it's not and we're going to, we won't award a contract to anyone. But if we, if we find that we can and we believe that we can, uh, that, that will be the case, then we'll move forward with, with coming back with, with some sort of contract. We reserve the right to make an award to one, uh, none, one or more vendors if we, if, if we see that's in the best interest of the region. And why that's important is because if we make one award and one contractor was going to handle all four hundred and eighty thousand tons of our municipal waste, then they're going to have to have a large facility and it's going to take longer time to build that. Uh, we think if you can have multiple vendors, then they can build smaller facilities and they can stand them up much quicker and get us into a situation where, um, in, in twenty four months, we're operating. So takeaways from today, really, and I'm, I'm, I am winding up. I know I've taken a lot of time here, but, uh, this is, I think this is an important topic. Today's takeaway is as, uh, alternative, uh, waste disposers going to cost in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty million dollars. Uh, that's what our consultants have said and that seems to be, um, all of, everything I've read, um, says that's a number that, that's a really good budget for the number of tons we're asking for. Uh, we, we think that the office are going to offer a twenty year term. So we'll base our, uh, financials on a twenty year agreement. Uh, the current use and support agreements go through Ju- uh, June of two thousand and twenty seven. If, um, this works, um, and you, you're comfortable with it, uh, we would be looking for a much longer use and support agreement so we could justify entering a contract with, uh, contractors going to invest this kind of money. Uh, SIPS will be requesting that each, um, member community renew, uh, their use and support agreement prior to the two thousand and twenty seven deadline so that we could, uh, uh, so that we could, um, enter into a contract, um, once those terms are negotiated. And when those terms are negotiated, our team would be certainly coming in, including our financial advisors, our technical, uh, portion of our team and, and make sure that you understand fully exactly what we're, we're, we're looking at trying to do. Here is, um, a conceptual schedule that we developed for my board, um, when we, when we went out for bid. And this schedule, um, is very conservative. Uh, it, it goes through a five-year term that's based on, on building one facility. And it has, um, uh, built into this about eighteen to twenty four months for, uh, use and support agreements to be, uh, gone through. Uh, we think we can do that much sooner. So on the schedule, uh, as we've looked at some of the proposals, um, what we think is that, um, we'll be refining this, this schedule and coming back with it, with a new schedule that's much, much more condensed and, um, accurate. There's, again, this was the original, um, schedule that we put out. And that's what I'm going to all of the, the member localities, uh, with is that schedule that we put out originally. Uh, we think that's going to change. And if, uh, another thing that would impact is, uh, if a, if a company has already gone through this, uh, conditional use permit process or, uh, property is already zoned for the use, that will cut a tremendous amount of time off of that, that original conceptual time. Uh, the proposed schedule, uh, con- contemplates about twelve to eighteen months for the use and support agreements. I said, uh, eighteen to twenty four, but it's twelve to eighteen months. And, uh, we think we can get through those sooner. We're already working on, uh, kind of the framework for new use and support agreements that takes out some of the language that's been restrictive, uh, to, to recycling. And then, uh, the bottom line is, um, that the project will likely come in much sooner than, than the five years that was originally projected. And with that, I would be glad to, to try to answer any questions you might have or, um, we'll want to hold those.
Opening up to council members that have questions or comments. Mr. Ike?
Thank you. A very clear and concise presentation. I do appreciate the detail. That's, that's really important in this matter especially. Uh, just one simple question. Are you able to divulge how many people, how many vendors applied, submitted their RFPs?
Not at this time. We're under, uh, evaluation of those proposals.
Okay.
Um, but, but we have, uh, a number of proposals.
Thank you.
Do you and the board feel confident that you will be able to find the right vendor for our region?
Mr. Mayor, I've been working on this project, um, learning and, and, and visiting sites for three years. And, and I know, uh, there's, uh, vendors that are out there that can do this. Um, we have, uh, proposals that are good proposals and our valuation team will continue to go through them. And I feel quite sure that when, when all of the process is over, we'll be coming back with, uh, what we feel like is a very good contract for the region. But, um, until that happens, um, I hope that, uh, satisfies you because I can't say that we are because I'm one member of the com- of the committee.
Sure.
But I believe that, uh, my knowledge of, of the process, um, and, and I've, I've spent a lot of time learning about how this works and, and visiting sites that, that do this. And I believe that it's very doable. Certainly, uh, mixed waste sorting is very, very doable.
When you invite, so the technology's there, when you, when you visit these sites, do you also, um, touch base with the, the governing bodies of those localities to see that they're, if there are any, uh, unforeseen issues that they didn't, they didn't, uh, address?
I, I'm intimately familiar with all of the major facilities that are out there. And I'm, and I, I know how they're, they're perceived by both the public and by the communities. Um, and I think the one thing that you always have to remember with these types of facilities, there's two pieces of this. There's the front end, which is a mixed waste sorting. There's the front end, which is a mixed waste sorting. That's only part of it. Once you get the mixed waste sorting done, it's what you do with those organics. There are pilots guy, guys out there who are saying they're going to make jet fuel. They're going to, um, do, uh, do all kinds of, of, of ideas that, um, have been done in other, um, segments of, of industry. But taking mixed waste and doing that with it is challenging. But there are many, uh, pro- many things that you can do with the organics that come out of mixed waste that are pretty certain, they're very simple, but they're pretty certain what your outcome's going to be. Uh, and as far as mixed waste sorting goes, um, those who are opponents of mixed waste sorting will tell you that they, it leaves dirty, dirty waste. Well, that's just, just not true. It's just not true. Uh, we, we would visit a site that was taking residual from a s- typical everyday recycling center and they were sorting that. They would come to them in bales. They would break the bales open and they would sort that. They got down to ten percent residual in those and they were selling. And companies are, are, are going crazy over recycled plastic now. Mercedes is using the, the very, the bottom of the barrel stuff mixed with some paper to build component, plastic components in Mercedes cars. And BMW is doing the same thing. There's a lot of use for plastics out there. And there are these plastic companies, one of the largest plastic companies in the world, Lionel Bussell, is trying to get control of waste in the United States so they can pull the plastic bottles out. Because one of the most expensive parts of producing plastic is energy and it's the most uncertain. So their sales prices for their, for their goods and services are doing this on a chart. And they're trying to find a way to level that out. So this is the way they're doing it. They use a mixed waste sorting facilities to pull the plastics out and then they're taking the plastics back to their plants because they can do it at a steady price.
Thank you, Mr. Baglo. Other questions or comments, Mr. Ritter?
Oh, thank you. This very interesting discussion. And with all due respect, I don't think you answered the question. So the question is, have you spoken to the government entities that have contracted for this service? And are they endorsing and happy with it?
I have not talked directly to these, um, to these communities. However, um, I read every trade magazine there is and the, and they, they, they talk to the, to the, to the, to the cities and the counties where these facilities are located. And some where the, they're doing simple things with their organics, they're very, very happy. Others are not. Fulcrum, Reno, Nevada, just, uh, they just, Fulcrum just closed a plant in Reno, Nevada. They were trying to make jet fuel out of, out of municipal solid waste. I could have probably told you that was going to happen before, before it actually happened because it's just a complicated effort. But Reno's not going to be happy. But where they're doing the right thing with both the, the, the front end and the back end of the waste, communities are happy.
Okay. And, uh, well, I, I guess there's a difference between governing bodies who are actually paying. I mean, citizens are paying, of course. So I, I'd appreciate it if you somehow you would let us know. I mean, I know that you probably have confidentiality with, um, the answers to the RFP and the proposals. But this is a big deal for us. Because when you use the twenty to thirty percent recycling rate, ours was more than twice that high here. We have a, whether or not it was properly done is a different question. We just had a very large percentage of the households participating. And, uh, I, I wanted to ask a question about the Suffolk landfill and the cost of the flyover. Can we assume that, that construction is still an obligation SIPSA has, and SIPSA and obviously the members, to construct the flyover to the landfill?
Yes, ma'am. We awarded a contract to, to construct the, the flyover. It's forty-two point four million dollars. Contract was awarded last week. Our board approved it and the money is available to build the flyover. Uh, that's been something that we surcharge each ton of waste, uh, for, for years to, to pay for that. And that surcharge still is on through, um, twenty, um, twenty twenty-eight.
Okay. Um, and I guess I'm, I am one of those skeptical about the single bin. So I'm sure as this process goes on, I'm going to have a number of questions. I'm sure some other people do. Because part of the issue has always been the contamination. And it's just hard for me to wrap my head around separating post-contamination in a single bin.
Well, I think one of the things that you have to remember is that these are plastic, this is plastic that were, or the main commodity that was, one of the main commodities we're talking about is plastic. And they don't reuse plastic bottles as they're put in the waste. They're, they're reprocessed. They go through a process to be recreated into some other type of, of bottle or plastic material. So through that process, that, the, the concern if it has a, a little bean juice on it or whatever is not a concern. One of the things that, um, that we're looking at also is we know that one of the most valuable commodities that comes in is, from a recyclable standpoint, is OCC. And, um,
Uh, what's OCC?
Old corrugated cardboard.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So, um, one of, and, and we see it come into our, our transfer stations now. Can't do a thing about it because we can't do any recycling, uh, currently under our use and support agreements. However, um, what we've discussed is we can track tho- those trucks that come in and we wouldn't continue to let them dump valuable old corrugated cardboard on the floor and mix it in with waste. We would want that to come out and we could get top dollar for that. And we would have a contractor that, that would go to that vendor. And so, and, and it, it sounds crazy that a company that deals in that much cardboard doesn't have a, a vendor already, but they don't. They, they just bring it to us and dump it on our floor. And we would be doing some, uh, some, some work to try to, to decrease the amount of cardboard that comes to us for that very reason. Cardboard is a different situation. It can become contaminated. Even paper can, can, can become contaminated. However, you got a plant that's operating just off of the edge of, of, um, of the Elizabeth River and off of, next to, uh, uh, the, the high, the high-rise bridge and they want all of the paper they can get, dirty or not. And, and it's, they're just turning it into a different type of paper. If it's o- corrugated cardboard and it's dirty, they don't care. It'll turn into some other type of paper. Now, you, you are correct in some, some of the items that you recycle. If it's, uh, cardboard and it's dirty, they're not going to be able to turn it back into cardboard again. But they can turn it into some other kind of paper. So it's still being recycled and that's the key piece. And keep in mind that our, our goal here, when we started this, was not to recycle. Our goal was to reduce the amount of waste we were putting into the regional landfill. This just became a byproduct of that. And I want to go back to the, the question that you asked about the communities. Part of this RFP is our team. Our entire team will go spend several days at these sites. And one of the things we will do is talk to the, the elected body and find out what they think about them. Because it's, it, we do think it's important that we talk to them. But the time to do that is when you're ready to make a decision, uh, on, on a final, um, vendor. I've, I've not been to any of the, the, um, of the member communities', um, elected, uh, officials and asked them that. But we certainly get that information through our trade publications that we read.
Mr. Ritter, if you wouldn't mind, can we just get, and then I come back to you? I want to get everybody to have a chance to, to ask, and then I can come back to you. I see you have some other questions.
I do.
Do you mind?
You're breaking my continuing.
We'll take the whole time then. Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I want to ask a, let's add a kind of different questions. You, you indicated on, with, during a presentation, um, that getting, um, getting thirty percent of the waste, or getting down to thirty percent of the waste has allowed SIPSA to extend the, the life cycle of the, um, the cylinders. Currently, you, you say that we're, we have a life expectancy of sales eight and nine at twenty sixty-one. Is that at the thirty percent number or is that current rates that are going?
That's at the current rates and that's not permitted yet.
Okay.
If it's permitted, but, but it's, that's at the current rates we have going into the landfill.
All right. So then let, let's just talk about the, the sales that are permitted. So that life cycle is twenty thirty-seven.
Correct.
Correct?
That's correct.
If, if we were to get to that forty, um, percent rate that you were mentioning with, with these RFPs, what would that do for the life cycle of the landfill? What, what would it extend it to?
It would put it, it would, it would put eight and nine, if, if it's permitted, it would put it through twenty-one, twenty-eight. And if we went, um, just got seven, it would put us into twenty... I don't, I don't want to give you the number for that, but it would extend it considerably.
Around about.
Yeah. It, I, I don't want you to hold me to this, but, because I'm not certain on this number. But I want to say it, it's, um, it, it's almost fifty years.
Okay. All right. So, um, at current rates, if we do nothing, you've mentioned that twenty sixty-one, which seems like a long time to me, but from your industry, that's right around the corner. What would we then do if we get to twenty sixty-one with current technologies, um, with, with current rate of content going into the landfill?
That's a very good question because, what we would, what we would have to do is we would haul waste to a third-party landfill. And what's happening in the state is the volume of airspace is here. And we're putting this amount of waste in it and we're kind of staying steady. But what's happened when they stop building landfills and you continue to put that amount in, the volume goes down, or the vol- volume goes up, but the airspace that's available goes down. And so, but the, the laws of supply and demand will tell you that that landfill space is going to become extremely expensive. The less we have, the more it's going to cost because we got the same, the same or more amount of waste that's going to be trying to go into that same cell.
Okay.
So we're very concerned about that. And, uh, the, the, the other item, um, that we would be concerned about is hauling. Because if we have to haul to Atlantic landfill and Waverly, our hauling costs would go through the roof. And right now, if we had to haul all our waste to Waverly, um, and, or further to Republic, then we would be over a hundred and twenty dollars a ton for hauling and, for all-in cost.
Hauling and tipping fee. Okay.
That number's only going to get worse as we get, as we use more of the airspace that we have available.
Yeah. Got you. Okay. Um, so two more questions because I know the time is, is fleeting. What impact would, um, the RFP process have if a locality were to decide to, um, sign a contract with a, a local MRF? Would that have any impact on, um, SIPSA's ability to fulfill these RFPs that you have coming out?
No, we would still move forward in the same fashion. But I would caution, uh, anyone going out into this industry alone because the more tons you have, the better your bargaining power is. If you, and, and one of the things that, that I've said all along is SIPSA's going into this with the intention of trying to make sure that everybody's needs are met because we need to stay whole as a region to maintain the four hundred and eighty thousand tons.
Right.
If I go to someone and say, how much are you going to charge me to get rid of my waste? I have four hundred and eighty thousand tons. And you go to that same company, you say, I've got a hundred thousand tons. Who's going to get the better rate?
Understood.
I will get the better rate because I have more tons.
Okay.
Uh, so it is critical to, to try to keep those tons together. And part of the process of going around talking to the communities, I'm, I'm making notes, uh, you know, what, what, what are the current areas of concern so we can try to stay together as a unit and make sure that the volume stays up.
So in the interest of time, I have a lot of, I'll, I'll cease questions there, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just, um, were you, oh, okay. Any couple, but, okay.
No, you go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. I'll be very brief. So I've got some questions about the timeframe. You said that, um, it's likely that, that things will be shortened. You contemplate it could be shortened. Can I have some figures that we're looking at? So you said proposals are under review. You're going to be refining the proposed schedule based on those reviews. So when, when we can, can we expect to see a new proposed schedule coming out?
We meet, our committee meets again, um, on July the first. And one of the things that we will be discussing is the schedule. Uh, because we are ahead of schedule now. The work that the committee's doing is ahead of schedule. But we will be going back to the board in our August meeting with a closed session update on the process. And, uh, that, that point, I would be happy, um, to, to put out another public schedule because we need to make sure that our board, um, knows that schedule before I put it out to anyone else and that they're comfortable with that. So, um, I would say sometime after August the twenty-sixth is our, our board meeting in August. So anytime after that.
Okay. And then you indicated there would be a reduction in time if there was already a, um, conditional use permit and property zone. What are you, I mean, what is your estimate there as the reduction in time? As far as that with the twelve to eighteen months for the new use and support agreements, what are you estimating? Because right now we're looking at a twenty twenty-nine end date. Are you thinking years, months?
Years. I mean, we, we, we had in the schedule, uh, twelve to eighteen months for, uh, use, uh, for a conditional use permit if one was needed. And if, if rezoning had to take place, we had to go through zoning. A company had to go through zoning ordinance, then we had twelve to eighteen months in there for that. And, and I can tell you that I'm, I'm very comfortable that we're, we can cut two years off of this easily without, without a whole lot of, uh, concern at all. Going, um, past that, I would want the committee to, um, agree on that and that the board would have to approve that. But I'm, I'm very confident that, that, that two years off this five-year term is going to be a doable thing.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I guess...
And some of the vendors actually could start doing some, some processing immediately.
Okay.
They're, they're ready to start. They have facilities that they could, they could operate now. Uh, but that's not to say that that's a facility that's going to be selected by the committee. But, but, but that's why there's, there's so much uncertainty about that. Until we make a decision on, uh, who we're going to continue to, to work with, then it's, it's hard for me to give you a, a firm date.
So with...
I understand that.
With SIPSA's goal being reducing the landfill space, would you agree that a two-ben solution in addition to the, this technology you're talking about would be the best way to recycle the most to reduce space?
Well, yeah. I'm not sure there would be a need for that because you would already be, you, you, th- through a mixed waste sorting, you'd be, you'd be removing the recyclables out of the front end of it. So there would, I'm not sure why you would want to then pay to have curbside recycling as well on top of that because you'd be, you'd have two forms of recycling. You'd be paying for both of those. Uh, with mixed waste sorting, uh, for instance, I'm just going to throw a number out. If, if SIPSA's tip fee were to go up ten dollars a ton, you know, a hundred and forty thousand tons, what that would mean would be recycling, you would receive recycling as part of it and it would be another one point four million on top of what you're paying SIPSA now. Versus, and I don't know what the city's number is, but I can tell you...
It's zero right now because we don't offer recycling.
But, but your citizens want recycling and you were paying something at some point before. So whatever that number was, if it was two million or five million or ten million, whatever you were paying, we would be recycling for one point four million if the tip fee went up ten dollars.
Okay.
You follow what I'm saying?
So I would be interested in seeing the data that you have that indicates that the single stream solution is a cleaner, better way of recycling versus a two-ben and additional to the, uh, single stream recycling. Because you indicated that this is all new technology. It just came about in the last year, but that's not what my research uncovered. So I'm just a little bit interested in getting some more data and the information that you have. If you don't mind just sharing with us, not at this time. I know we don't have a lot of time.
Right.
But just sharing with us some of that data you have that indicates. Because I'm, I'm one of those people that doesn't believe in that either. I, I think if I'm throwing in my three dogs' worth of feces in my bin with my paper and newspaper, I don't see how you're going to then recycle my paper, cardboard, newspaper that may be covered in, in animal waste. I just, it's hard for me to grasp that. So if you have some of that data, I would be interested in seeing it, um, at a later date. Be happy to kind of connect afterwards. But thank you.
Ms. Ritter?
Thank you. Um, you talked about multiple companies. And if you wouldn't mind just keeping your answers as short as you can, but with, you know, good explanation. Do you foresee multiple companies being part of the award? Or do you foresee a single company?
We're, we're in the process of, uh, RFP and I'm not going to, um, I'm, I'm not going to divulge that. That would be my opinion and not the committee's opinion. So I wouldn't want to do that.
All right. So in the federal government, you know, they have a number of teaming contracts where several different companies team on a contract and two or three of them are supporting the main answerer. And often the same three companies may put in three proposals with different leaders. So, you know, I'd like some clarity. If there are more than one company that you select, does that mean... more than one company that you select, does that mean the same two hundred and fifty million investment by each company should you go to multiple sources?
That would be correct. I'm not saying it would be two hundred and fifty million if we split it up, because it would be smaller units. And also, uh, I'm familiar with the teaming contract, and that's not the case with, uh, bids that have come back in for this, this process.
Okay. So I guess the biggest question, and consider me skeptical also, um, would be, well, how do you foresee the tipping fees going? Given that two of our sister cities' members have extended their, um, separate bin recycling programs a- and associated costs to the, added on to their municipal, um, waste fees, how do you foresee the tipping fees? Will they stay stable? Will they go up? Will they go down? Do you have any ide- you may have no idea, which is fine. Just say so, and we can move on.
No, I, I, I do have an idea. I know, I, I know where we are, but we, we, I would not be able to tell you that until we made a selection.
Okay, do you anticipate them going up?
Well, they're going to go up, would you, because there's, the, the Consumer Price Index controls all of our industry. So it will go up, just like, so will recycling, and so will, uh, landfilling and hauling, and all the other things go up on, on a, uh, some type of, um, index. But it's, I don't foresee that being, it will be a long-term contract, so the, so that amount will be set based on whatever the index is that we agree on.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's where the problem started many years ago, was the lack of control of those tipping fees and what we were facing. So, um, I think we'll all be interested in how you see the future of the costs that each city will be paying. Thank you.
There are no other comments or questions. Mr. Bagley, thank you so much. We really appreciate you, uh, coming in. It's been interesting, uh, information and, and good food for thought. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Always pleased to talk trice. I'll be happy to come talk anytime you like.
Alright now, there you go.
And I'll turn it over to Bob for the, uh, the, the final presentation. Uh, I asked Bob to do it in, uh, uh, ten minutes or less. Um, and, uh, this is normally what we would do as our annual update for the city's curbside recycling program. Generally speaking, we would do it in July or August, so that we have the full year-over-year numbers. Because we were having the conversation tonight about recycling, and it may be germane to your consideration tonight, we wanted to go ahead and give you the, that annual update tonight. So I'll turn it over to Bob.
Good evening. Uh, we'll try and do this in a lot of time left. Uh, the material on the slides, though, are pretty self-explanatory. So, uh, if, I'll probably breeze through a little faster than I normally would, uh, but we can anchor down on anything at the end and answer any questions you might have. So as a, as a reminder, um, council, uh, we eliminated curbside recycling and created a new recycling program in Chesapeake, and it was undertaken in order to help fund the Public Safety Pay Plan a few years ago. Council directed staff to maintain a recycling program that would reduce costs, improve the quality of the recyclable stream, as well as provide our residents' choices. As you may also remember, we have, uh, multiple legs of our, of our program. The first is, um, creating drop-off locations throughout the city. Uh, we have seven drop-off locations. Those are, uh, on the map. Uh, we'll have a slide of the pictures as well. And we have one site that's strictly, um, aluminum cans. That's at the Animal Services on Military Highway. We chose these sites because they're easily accessible for the majority of our residents across the city, geographically dispersed. These are recent pictures. They're all pictures, uh, taken in the last couple of months of our locations, including Animal This slide talks, uh, tons. So this is our tonnage collected of e- each of our sites. You can see that, uh, our municipal center is our, is our highest, uh, used site. Uh, as you may also recall, we moved the site to a different location here on the municipal center. We increased the, uh, bins available, and, uh, and we continue to have the, uh, the most recycling done at this location. Um, additionally, uh, we've just recently moved the Greenbrier, uh, site as well in City Park, uh, to increase the amount of recyclables we can take there as well. We'll talk about all that a little bit more in the future. Interestingly, um, the tonnage is, is more than what we initially expected and what the experts predicted. So experts said, "You're lucky to get, you know, five, ten percent of what, uh, of what we were recycling curbside." That's not the case. We're, we're much more, and the, and the stream is cleaner. So we're super happy about that. So what is the cost? Uh, this is the cost, uh, and this is all-in cost. So this year, we had twenty-five thousand dollars worth of, um, of cost in order to move our Greenbrier site to the other side of the park. Uh, we ensured that we, um, we wanted to ensure that we hauled it away. So GFL is our contractor. We ensured that we had people that go out every day to make sure that it's clean, so our, our recycling sites are clean. We wanted to ensure that, um, we took into account the additional tipping fees for the additional tonnage that was going to SIPSA and collected there. Um, our all-in cost for this year, we're projecting to be one point nine million dollars. That's across the board, um, and that includes our tipping fee right now of sixty-seven dollars, which goes down to sixty-five dollars next month, to answer your specific question, Ms. Ritter. And that's at least the near term. I can't talk the future. That's not my job. Uh, as I talked about, um, it was super important. One of the things that we, uh, wanted to ensure was that these sites weren't just dumping grounds. One of, it was one of the concerns that, uh, we had going in. Our residents expressed concerns, council expressed concern, and experts said, "Boy, you have to really watch out to make sure that they don't become just, we're, uh, used tires and, and people just take trash." So, um, we, uh, committed resources to do that. We have folks go around every single day to make sure the sites are clean. Uh, when the bins are emptied, we make sure it's clean. Uh, so we're, we're out there every day, and I think the, if you would ask anybody that goes out there, we're doing a really good job of that. Public Works has done a marvelous job of that. Uh, and that was one of our goals. We want to ensure that when we provide a service, we do it with our care standard, and that's what it is. And again, we talked about the, the tonnage. Um, we're, we're about forty-one percent higher this year over last year. Uh, that's what we're projecting. So that's a, a significant increase, and we're happy with that as well. Back to our Greenbrier site. Um, we had concerns of where it was. Uh, it was next to the Fun Forest. It's a, a highly-used area of City Park. Um, there's also limited space to have the bins there, so we couldn't expand it inside. We, uh, in, in that place, so we wanted to, uh, increase the capacity, so we moved it to the other side of the park. It's next to the SIPSA, um, tipping, uh, site, and so the transfer station. So we're, um, that's just recently been done. We're expecting that site to actually increase the, the tonnage, um, as more people, uh, are able to recycle there. It also makes the Fun Forest more easily accessible. So that's fun. We just recently, um, started a renovation on Russell Library. Russell Library is one of our, uh, drop-off locations. It's a, a site that's used very, um, frequently by our residents. Um, during the renovation, we've, the site is still open. This is kind of a public service announcement. Site is still open. You can still use it. You just have to go in a different way and go out a different way. Once the renovations are collect, uh, completed at Russell Library, we'll go back to the, to the other way of doing business. But it's still open, so still go to Russell and drop off your recyclables. In an effort to continue to, um, to do better at what we do, that's one of our goals, is to, to continuously improve, uh, we're looking at another site in Southern Chesapeake. Um, we're in, uh, just site, kind of site surveys right now in the Edinburgh area. Um, when it's complete, and we expect that to move forward. When that happens, we could either just increase the footprint in Southern Chesapeake or shut down the Toll Plaza, um, location. That's still a, a process that we're going through. But, uh, again, this is an idea. Everything we do, we look to do better, and this is one of the ways to do better. A second leg that we, uh, had for our strategy for, uh, recycling was to, um, to offer residents the, um, to pay for a service, uh, with the private, the private tr- free market, uh, for the convenience of curbside recycling to continue that. Uh, vendors who wish to operate, um, on private property just had to get, uh, you know, an agreement signed by the Public Works Director, uh, before they start, started operations. They cannot operate in the city right-of-way without a franchise agreement. At the beginning of the process, we had multiple vendors operate in this space. Uh, initial, uh, starting-out fee for the lowest-priced vendor was twelve dollars a month. Uh, that was for an every-other-week pickup, which was, uh, similar to our curbside recycling program. According to our vendors, there was limited public interest. Uh, in fact, only one provider currently offers curbside recycling in our, in our city at this time, and it's at twenty-six dollars a month. Uh, the city requires an annual report from our vendors, and Recyclops, who is our current vendor, uh, the, the vendor that current operate, currently operates in, in the city, um, collected a hundred and forty-eight tons of material from their subscribers, uh, but that's on a calendar year. It was the last calendar year. Uh, the city has offered to allow vendors to utilize, um, a franchise agreement to operate in our right-of-ways, and so far, no vendors, um, have taken up us on that offer. Dennis mentioned briefly about, uh, Total Fiber Recovery Chesapeake. Uh, that's currently operating, brand-new operating. It's exciting, new, uh, recycling industry that opened in the city. Whoops. Um, and, uh, they will be, um, it's located off of Bainbridge Boulevard, and it has capacity to, to process, to pull mixed paper and cardboard for reuse. Uh, GFL, our current, uh, hauler for our recyclables from our drop-off locations, is exploring purchasing a baler that would allow us to take our mixed paper and our, uh, cardboard from our recycling centers directly to TFR and feed that system. So that, that's a way to, uh, have that clean stream going to TFR, uh, and, and have that be as successful. They're operating about forty percent capacity at this time. Now, some of this, you're, you just heard, so this is about as quick a refresher as, as you're going to get, a couple minutes later. So, uh, you know, prior to, to, um, to December twenty twenty-two, uh, there was a, we were taking, most of the, uh, material was being, um, incinerated at, uh, Wheel Abraider. Um, and of course, I was in, in Portsmouth, the fire in twenty twenty-two significantly reduced that capacity. Um, and so, um, it's obviously increasing the amount of material going to landfill. You couple that with the challenge of permitting sales eight and nine, and the future of the landfill is approaching a crisis. Your word, sir, not mine. Um, alternative waste disposal methods and conservation of the landfill, uh, is essential for the future of the region's municipal waste stream. Uh, this, this, I love this chart, because it kind of just shows what, uh, you know, in a pie, pie graph, what, uh, the, the, the stream is. So, uh, prior to, um, Wheel Abraider having their fire, um, the pie chart on the right shows the total amount of tonnage collected, both solid waste in our brown cans and the recyclable, uh, in the blue can, the total amount of tonnage. Um, and using, um, our curbside recycling vendors' numbers, only six percent of the total material collected at homes, both in the blue bin and the brown bin, was recycled. Um, the rest went to either be incinerated or went to the landfill. That's their numbers. Ms. Ritter, I see, you see that with, uh, the contractor, our contractor we used to have. I'm not sure we can use their name. Um, that was, those are their numbers based on the, uh, total tonnage collected of our brown bins and the blue bins. So what they said was, was recycled in the blue bins, their numbers, total tonnage. And that's what it would be with the SIPSA, with the SIPSA RFP. So you can see a significant more, uh, material being recycled. If, if you were just to use that, that number that SIPSA provided, the five to seven percent, um, diversion rate that we had before, it's one-tenth of the total that would be, um, diverted under the new, the SIPSA proposal. So, again, when we started this program, the recycling program, we wanted to reduce costs. We wanted to improve quality of recyclables, and we wanted to provide our citizens' choices. Uh, and since then, though, we've also talked about increasing our, improving in convenience, increasing quantity as well as quality of the recycling stream, and then diverting maximum out of the landfill. And we have three basic options. We can continue what we're doing. Um, it's been successful. It's been, uh, more successful than we expected initially. Um, however, we know that the total number of, of the total material being recycled is lower than what we were doing at the curbside. The total tonnage is, is, is less recycling. However, um, we are also operating, offering that to people that weren't able to recycle before. Curbside recycling didn't help people in apartments and condominiums and, and, uh, other, uh, locations. So, um, the drop-off locations provide that. Um, we could go back to curbside recycling program, uh, since that, uh, isn't in the current budget. Uh, it would require a new fee of approximately eight to ten dollars a month. That would include the curbside recycling, capitalizing more blue bins, setting up the billing process and, and creating the process, and we think that would take, uh, twelve to eighteen months, as well as that dollar amount. Um, it doesn't reduce costs, doesn't, uh, keep a, a stream clean, doesn't provide choices for, um, our multiple family unless we were to keep open our drop-off locations. And then finally, is to, uh, is to continue to explore the SIPSA alternative, the single-stream, uh, and it provides really all of the metrics that council asks us to, to look at. So what are we going to continue to do? We're going to, um, continue to right-size, continue to operate with the way we are unless otherwise directed. We're going to, uh, continue hosting our Chesapeake Recycles Days. We're going to continue to explore with, uh, SIPSA's future options, and of course, there's a possibility of a referendum to return to curbside recycling. Done.
Are you out of breath? Good job, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Yes, uh, Mr. Geis, thank you very much, and very glad to see that recycling is, uh, working, a cleaner recycling. Um, but currently, do we, do you see where we need to, uh, add capacity for recycling, or pickup times, or additional locations?
Yes, sir. In fact, uh, we, we intend to continue to do that process improvement. So we're looking at, uh, Southern Chesapeake. We're looking at, uh, every site that we're currently operating. Um, we've, uh, worked with our, our vendor to pick up more, specifically here. I'll give you an example, uh, here in, uh, at the City Hall Municipal Center location. We expanded, we moved it from one site of the complex to another because of, uh, a better service to our citizens. Um, we increased the capacity as where, we, we more than doubled the capacity at City Hall here, so, um, and we increased the number of, uh, times that GFL basically picks up here at City Hall almost every day besides the weekend. Uh, we're doing that across the board, and, and Chesapeake City Park is another example where we're just doing that process improvement. And we're going to continue to do that if necessary.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, and I ask that because right now, at Russell Memorial, all the dumpsters are full. I just got an email.
Well, we'll get our vendor out there.
Can I very briefly? Um, Mr. Geis, thank you for the presentation. Just, is TFR currently accepting materials for recycling? I know they're open, but are they currently taking in materials right now to be recycled?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
And we, our recycling drop-off centers aren't providing it to them yet, because it requires to be baled, and we don't bail yet.
Okay. And the future of recycling, the numbers here, you indicated it's a diversion rate of five to seven percent. What is the recycled rate in addition to the diversion rate?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay, so that would be, I mean, the number we're looking at here, the SIPSA proposed solution is a total diversion, but we should be considering, I think, the diversion as well as recycle rate when we're looking at what's not going to SIPSA. Can we, if we could just have that number, so we can update our, I think, our little pie charts here with something more inclusive of what is a true recycle and diversion versus just a diversion?
Yeah, yeah, and I think the diversion, and I won't talk for SIPSA, but as I understand it, the diversion includes both recycling and stuff not going to the landfill, so it would be a total number there, so.
Okay, just want to make sure that's the same for the vendor as well, that they include diversion as this has been recycled and diverted is one number.
You're talking about the other pie chart?
Yes.
Yeah, so that number is based on, yes. The answer is yes. We, and we'll make sure that, and we'll get that information to council.
Okay, lastly, do we know where GFL's taking the items that are currently being picked up for recycling?
Yes, they are going, now I'm escaping.
RDS.
Yes, RDS, in Portsmouth.
Okay, for recycling is what our intent is, at least.
Correct. That's the contract required. We, we require our vendor to take it to recycling, not to go to a landfill.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thanks all for the presenters. Council will be in our regular meeting at six-thirty, not by that clock.